Bernie's got that.
I will be that.
All right, and so we've got Joyce and Katie and Jarvis and me. Is that it?
And me, Lucy.
All right, I can't see Lucy.
I'm here.
Yeah, okay.
I'm also here. This is Adriana.
Adriana, okay. We've got everybody except Robert, is that right?
Looks like it.
Is Robert on? No, Robert's like me. He's... He doesn't want to mess with this technology. All right. So, um... Okay, so can we see the agenda then, Bernie? All right, all in order. I wonder if I can... There we go. All right, reference Metro ordinance 2.68, 0.030, providing that any decision of this body can be appealed through chance report of Davidson County. Then I will ask for a motion to approve conducting the meeting by electronic means as shown on the... in the agenda for the meeting. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second from somebody.
Joyce.
Joyce, somebody. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right. I will then move to the minutes. You've all had an opportunity to see the minutes. Do I hear any additions or corrections to the minutes?
This is Katie. Moved to adopt the minutes.
We have motion to adopt.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, we'll move then to chance report.
Okay, a few good items here. First, just with the general report. As you're looking through your board packet this time, you'll see that we've changed the data and the metrics that we've provided you this time. We... we obviously have the circulation data, but we've broken it down by format and type of E-media that we have there. Bernie and Lee's crew have done a great job in getting us that information. We also have some wireless data, which is pretty interesting. One of the things we've been kind of paying attention to, and that's on page 14, is just the... How many people are actually jumping on our network from outside of our buildings? People pulling up in the parking lots or hanging around outside the buildings. No, they're... I mean, what... Yeah, I know. It's one of the things we talk about, but you know, there's a real misconception that everybody in the United States has access to online information and data, and they do not. And so this is one of the things that we're seeing around the country as far as people just going outside and sitting in their cars in parking lots where the signal is strong enough. So you get a pretty good idea from looking at the information on that chart, we have strong data. We have strong wireless signals at a couple of our locations. But this is something we're going to track and we're going to think about promoting as the time goes on. We're also looking at trying to obtain some signal boosters. So this is maybe a little bit easier option for people in some of the other locations where the signal really doesn't go outside the building.
So is that why Bellby's so high count? Because it's a new building and the signal's probably out there a little bit better?
I'm guessing that is the reason. There may be a few other things going on there, but I'm guessing that is primarily the reason. I know that staff has been in that building quite a bit, so maybe it's some staff access going on there as well.
That's really interesting.
Yeah, it is. And there was some discussion nationally about whether or not it was a good idea to promote it because if you're wanting people to... Since you don't want everybody crowded up by your front door trying to get the signal.
I was gonna say, please say no, no.
Yeah. But I think I was overreacting and there is the issue about how long you leave the signals on and and whether people are around your building at night. We're looking at all that and trying to figure it out. But it's kind of an interesting chart, so... The other one that I thought was really quite fascinating and shows you how we really move things, and I'm sure Andrea will be talking about this when she brings up the date on NPL Universe, is on page 16, the program breakout and what we're doing with programs online. This is all virtual programming and the numbers that we're reaching are really pretty... You can see that 77,069. So we're doing some pretty great things there. And we have it broken out by age group and by what different locations are doing. And then at the bottom, you'd see that some big service breakouts such as bringing books to life and children's services and those sorts of things. So anyway, I think overall it's quite impressive and gives a real graphic picture of how we've changed the way we program.
Well, I was a little bit late getting on because I had a phone call just now from some good friends. And they're... You know, my age, you're a little bit actually older than I am, so they're part of the elderly population. And through this, they've been downloading Libby and then they get, I guess what I would call books on tape, but they listen to stuff and they... I mean, they're just sort of living through their virtual library right now. And it's made the quarantine much easier for them. And I'm sure they're not alone, particularly among the elderly population. You know, the nursing homes and assisted living facilities have been shut down. And most people are not getting visits from family or anything. I don't know whether they know how to do this or not, but it would be a wonderful thing for them if they are using the online stuff that we've got going on. I realize that's not... You're talking about programming here, but...
I am, but the circulation numbers we saw on the other chart give you an idea of that too. I mean, that's... that's where all that stuff's happening.
It's important.
It is. It's really good stuff. And one of the things I'd encourage you to do, and I mean, and I understand if you don't every month, but the thing that struck me this month, particularly in the overall board report, when you look at the different division reports, they give you a really good sense of how we're adjusting. So if you're... you have a chance to spend 10 or 15 minutes or so and just peruse those different division reports if you haven't already. It goes into some of the detail that really backs up what you're seeing with the data and what everybody's... and how they're making the shift. Any other questions about data before I move on here with a couple of other quick things before I get into the budget? Okay. One of the things that is not so wonderful that just happened is that we had a pipe come loose at Edmondson Pike.
Oh, no.
Between Thursday and yesterday, we've had part of the building flooded. Susan and Terry and the building maintenance people got right on it as soon as we knew about it, and we have the emergency team coming in to clean that up, and we're assessing the damage right now. We're guessing we lost some end panels on some shelving because of water damage and perhaps some pouring. We're still assessing that. One of the things we talked about, we don't have people in the buildings all the time at this point. It should be changing in a couple of weeks, but we do have maintenance staff that are going around on a regular basis and checking those buildings. So we just got... the timing was bad on this particular one. The other thing that I just wanted to make you aware of and is that we have been applying for the Different Cares Act options that have presented us... been presented to us. We have some options at the state level for equipment, for equipment. We're also looking at Metro for a number of things, including online materials. And we believe that there may be some funding there for the Community Partnership Grant as well. You know, one of the questions that I think people are asking all the time is whether or not you know, people are taking advantage of all the federal money that's out there. And we are literally homing the every corner, trying to make sure that we are applying for different funds where we can get them. So we're not leaving anything on the table. And Metro has been very helpful as far as assisting us with applying through their money, so... And that's really all I had. You're about to hear the rest of what you're hearing. It's just a lot of what I've been doing lately and what we've been doing, so... Anything else in general?
Anymore on the... on Metro's... on the Metro budget?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and get right into that right now.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. We have, as you may recall, the mayor's budget basically keeps us flat. The primary reduction in that budget was the Community Partnership Funds. They're attempting to replace that, as I just mentioned, through Cares Act funding. So we're not actually seeing, at least in his budget, a significant reduction. The issue with that budget for us continues to be that we are short about 17 positions from where we were two years ago. So we are... we still consider ourselves short along with the current frozen positions that we do not believe that this budget would continue freezing those positions. We are sitting at around about 45 positions that are open right now. A few things that were not included in the budget that we requested. We had requested those 17 positions that I just mentioned. We'd also included a change in NASA to really do away with the process where we contracted the NASA services and had staffing to the NASA division and allow them to have those staff develop the programming and coordinate the programming. And at this point, we have not seen that those positions have been approved. We believe that NASA is still remaining in the same format it has been in regard to the funding. And you might recall that there was some movement afoot to create a separate commission for after-school. And I haven't heard any more about that, that it's gone through. So we've kind of been a holding pattern on all of this. I think one of the things that we need to keep in mind, I think we're going to see a lot of debate between now and the time the budget is approved regarding the property tax rate and whether that's accepted. I... We could see movement one way or the other, probably not up, but I wouldn't be surprised if we saw movement down. And the council people all seem to be very engaged and interested in what's happening, so...
Okay.
Votes for women and Katie, if you want to jump in at any point here regarding the marketing piece. The room itself is nearing completion. While we've been closed, vendors have continued to come in and install the electronic equipment and the tabletop and that sort of thing. The content, as I understand it, has been pretty much agreed upon for the different wall panels. And we are starting to push those out to the vendors. Jason Baxter, who's been our project manager on the actual construction part of the room, is now handling the coordination with the vendors to get the content to them and begin the processing of the panel and other physical pieces. The marketing, I understand the marketing committee is going full bore. I've heard reports from their committee meetings, so as I understand it, we're still shooting for an August opening on the room. Katie, do you have anything to add?
That is correct. The only thing I would add is that we are... We're... our plans are for a virtual opening, grand opening of the room. Because we just don't know at that stage how many people can be in the library or in that room. And rather than play it by ear and try to build a great big crowd for something that we can have a whole lot of people in, it will be a virtual grand opening, and it's going to be great. And just a little teaser... No, I won't do this because it's a public meeting.
That's not fair.
Well, I mean, I don't want it in the minutes, so I don't want to say it. That's... Sorry.
You won't be disappointed. How's that, Keith?
That's right.
Anyway, but I... you know, a lot of the work with the Votes for Women over the last month or so has been nailing down the content. And it's one of those things where they've really been looking at every word that's going to be presented either on the walls, semi-permanently or permanently, and beginning to think about what's going to be on the touchscreens and some other pieces there, so...
All right.
Okay.
I wanted to say too that, you know, you all, I'm working on the... On the Debate 2020 Committee at Denver. And so I've talked to Andrea about how we include Votes for Women in that whole program, in the community program. And with Metro Schools, use what they have, and then the teachers are going to adapt the curriculum that Andrea's doing for the different levels for Metro Schools, so...
Good.
Good.
Thanks, Joyce. Okay, so we are moving on to Andrea.
Right.
Good afternoon. Hope everybody can hear me. And Kent, will you just do a quick check for me to let me know that you can see my screen?
I cannot see your screen.
No.
Screen did just change when you came on, but I cannot see you. You're right in the middle. But I cannot see you and I cannot see any content.
Okay, you can hear me, right?
We can hear you.
Kevin, did you pass me presenter mode?
Yep, you are in presenter mode. Make sure you close out of your PowerPoint, then go to the share next to the view option.
Okay.
Here we go. Make it see your computer.
Okay, guys. Thanks for bearing with us as my PowerPoint presentation opens up.
There you go.
This is Andrea Fanta, Head of Marketing and Communications at Nashville Public Library. I'm happy to be with you guys today. I hope each of you is staying safe and well. Kent asked me to join you today to share the story of a recent initiative we're calling NPL Universe. And this is really a story about how you cannot keep a great library down. It seems like a long time since COVID-19 forced us to make the tough but responsible decision to close our facilities. Let's just quickly revisit the situation we faced back in March. First, we were faced with empty buildings and very shortly thereafter, a citywide safer-at-home order. So we had to come up with a plan to push services out to customers in quarantine. We were also keenly aware of community need at this unprecedented time, including Metro students who are now facing an abrupt and dramatic lapse in their school year. So we also had to focus on what NPL does best, on what we could do best to meet community need. And we had to move fast. We knew we had an estimated 86,000 students in need, not to mention parents, grandparents, caregivers, teachers, and all our other valued customers. The good news, the great news really, is that we were able to work together internally across departments and leverage the trust we had already built with our customers and our supporters. So this is a story about innovation and admission, but it's also a story about how the work we have done over decades to become essential to our community really paid off when it mattered the most. Right away, the library's education and literacy team, led by Assistant Director Elise Adler, approached us about launching our Summer Challenge Reading Initiative early. And that gave us an opportunity to partner with Metro Nashville Public Schools to get the word out not only to our customers, but to Metro Schools' families. We started seeing results right away, and in fact, I'll share some of those results with you in just a minute. After that critical piece of reaching Metro students with our reading initiatives, we dug in further. So if there's one thing COVID-19 team has taught me, it was not only that you can't keep a great library down, it's also that you cannot keep a librarian away from Storytime. And that is for a very good reason. Never underestimate the superpower of Storytime. They help build vocabulary and other early literacy skills. So we started online virtually with our beloved students' librarians, bringing virtual Storytimes to Facebook, bringing a sense of normalcy to the family and children that they would usually serve in-house. We added a Facebook Live Storytime with none other but the professor himself. And then we expanded to other offerings like art classes, cooking classes, Spanish Storytime, wellness content, and more. And this is what has become NPL Universe. In less than a month, 80-plus creators have ramped up to offer content across three channels. Eighteen members from Marketing and Communication and Production Services are working across teams. And NPL has ordered 7,000-plus eBooks and other e-resources, just like Mr. Simmons was talking about earlier, for our customers to enjoy in quarantine. In month one, our promotional efforts for NPL Universe got just under 97,000 reads on email, just over 900 website clicks, and just over 13,000 views on socials. In month one, our content got 44,000 views. And we saw a 71% increase in e-checkouts among juvenile and young adult readers. As I said, it's going to take a lot more than a global pandemic to keep a library like Nashville Public Library down. We're here, we're committed to serving our customers, and the work we're doing is paying off for our community. I want to thank Kent for having me and thank you all for your time, and I'd be very happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'd like to start with a round of applause.
Yes, I love the data. That is awesome. That is great.
Do we have anything to compare the data to? I mean, that's what I always come back to with data. I don't... The raw numbers look really good, but I don't, you know, I don't know relative to what. And I guess there's not anything to really compare this to, right?
Been in this situation before.
So that's a really good question, Mr. Simmons. I really appreciate the question. Obviously, this sort of captive audience is an unprecedented situation for us. I don't know if it really makes sense to compare an in-person Storytime where, you know, at Edmondson Pike, you would get 80-plus families to the convenience of an online Storytime where it stays up and people can really go back and watch whenever they want. So after a week, you've probably got hundreds and millions of thousands. I think that what this has shown us, just to your point about comparing data, is that it's not really an either-or situation, but a both-and situation. Something that we're really committed to, not only because physical distancing is going to require us to do this, but because we've seen such a big response, is to keep this kind of stuff going even after we reopen.
Yeah, that's kind of my next question.
Yeah.
That's my next question, too.
Yeah. Go back to the data and Andrea, with you? That's 71% increase in youth reading. Go back to that. So 71% increase from what?
So we... after we launched Summer Challenge and did some pretty intentional communications with Metro Nashville Public School, so after March, we saw patrons who, in our system, because of their AIDS, are classified as young adult or juvenile, checking out more. So 71% over what they had been doing. And I'm confident drawing the correlation, not only to Elise Adler and her team having the foresight to launch Summer Reading Challenge early, but obviously to all the work we did in getting the word out.
Yeah, that's fabulous. That's wonderful. Because one of the things that's really bothered me about this whole thing is that... You know, basically, I mean, the public school system is really shut down, from what I can understand. And it's not... you know, they're not getting a lot of online instruction from the public school system, I think. At least, that's the anecdotal stuff that I'm getting. And I mean, that's really... I mean, that's really disturbing. To me, that's more disturbing than just about anything that's happened through this. And to see that, you know, you have been a resource for these kids to be reading while they're out of school warms the heart, frankly.
I... you know, I think a crisis throws into... brings into stark relief and sharp focus what an organization has been doing to reach all people and build trusted relationships before the crisis hit. I think a crisis really shows what an organization is made of, and we've been working for years through Elise and her team with Metro Schools. And so being able to put out some joint messaging with Kent and Dr. Battle was really just the icing on the cake. But if anything, this shows that you can't wait until a crisis hits to start building those essential community relationships. I think this whole thing has been a testament to our library.
Right, and I just jump in there. I know that Elise and her team, as Andrea is referring to, have really been interacting directly with a lot of the people over at MNPS as we get through this and think about what final access is meaning for students and what it means to get devices into the hands of more students. And I know we're also talking about more textbooks, both in hard copy and maps online. And they've been working with our acquisitions teams on that as well. So it's... Full circle on that.
Andrew, this was just fantastic. Keith, I know that for Metro Schools, they had to... They're doing some of the distance learning, but what so many kids don't have, computers or internet. They're trying to figure out how to get computers to them if they feel it. But they have also had to resort to delivering packets by bus to all of these kids. And they're trying to give them deals, so they are, you know... It is difficult for them to deliver without the resources, you know, that they need to. This just shows, you know, what the digital divide is doing, you know?
Joyce, and to cross some of those fault lines, I know Elise would want me to mention that we're also working with Metro Schools on those bus deliveries. So we're actually sending out print materials for the reading initiative with those bus deliveries.
That's great. You're... I saw the copy of your presentation to the foundation, too. Kent, you need to send that to everybody. The resilience essential, the snapshot for policymakers and investors. Have you all seen that?
No.
It's brilliant. I know you did that.
I agree. It is. It's great. I've seen it.
Brilliant. And because it's not much reading, it's big print, everything that's... If you scan it, everything you need to know is in red. I think it's just brilliant, and you just left with those two words, resilience. I think it's just brilliant. And you just left with those two words, resilient and essential. I mean, I hope that the council got it.
They did. We sent it in. Part of our budget process this year was to fill out several sets of forms. One was a questionnaire for the finance committee. Another one went through the mayor's office, talking about services that were essential. And we just decided that it needed a supplement, so we sent in the document to the mayor's office.
Wonderful. Andrew, you've been working overtime.
She has been.
Send it, I don't, send it to us, Kent, or somebody, Andrew.
We will. We'll get it to you. Thank you very much, Joyce. It's sacred work. It's a privilege to get to do it.
Yeah. Bernie, did we send that as a separate attachment?
It was included with the board packet when I sent it out on Friday.
Yeah, so look at your Friday email.
Okay.
Kent, would you like me to take any other questions or?
Yep. Are there any other questions for Andrea?
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you, guys, each of you as well. Kent, thank you for the opportunity. Thanks for giving me this time.
Thank you.
Evan, if you could switch control of the screen back to me, please.
There's notes.
There's everything.
Okay. All right, here we go. All right, so the big gorilla of the meeting, the reopening plan.
Right. In your board packet on pages thirty-two through forty-six, you have a draft reopening plan that is probably about ninety-six percent of what we think the final one will be. And the key to this plan is the phase reopening. And we go from the early phase, phase one, where we're proposing that we will be doing curbside service, till we eventually work to phase four, where we would begin businesses we knew it or close to as what we knew it at some point down the road. What we're seeing is that we have concerns about safety for both our customers and the staff, certainly. And not just to social distancing and personal interactions, but also understanding how the virus fixes itself to books and other materials that people may be borrowing. And there's still no definitive word on how long certain of the virus will last on a book. And so you're seeing libraries across the nation opening up with different periods of quarantining their materials. Some are quarantining their books three days, others are quarantining their books five days when they receive them back and are doing curbside service. But elements of what we're trying to do with curbside service will include, obviously, the actual delivery to the patrons when they place to hold. They're called by staff. They can come by and pick up that book. We deliver the book to them at the curbside in their car, and the procedures and processes that are involved with that. And then the book being returned and how we process it so it can safely end up back on the library's shelf. So what's been going on over the last month or so is that we've been determining all those procedures in the different phases, with the real focus on phase one to kick it off. And as I mentioned, it involves holds processing, how we do that. It also involves staffing and understanding how we're staffing our functions as we go forward with that. And again, understanding how we quarantine the materials. So curbside service would really be the essence of our first phase. And we will be developing protocols around that. You're seeing a general document that, believe it or not, more of a broad swipe at what we're proposing to do, and there will be subdocuments developed internally underneath this so we have procedures in place for our safety, the safety of the customers, cleaning the buildings, all sorts of things that will be involved specifically with that. One of the key pieces of this is we move into phase two and we begin opening up the buildings and we start distancing seating, distancing the computers, cleaning computers. Those sorts of things will be, the metro has just released two policies, one of which is indicating that all staff must be wearing masks in the buildings when they're working. And one that came out following that is that all people entering Metro buildings in public are going to be required to wear masks as well. So I think those are good policies that they've completed. The trick for us in both phase one and phase two is going to be PPE and the staffing, as I mentioned, and understanding the staffing. The PPE, we believe, will be the thing that potentially could hold us back as we move forward. Currently, we've been directed to work through the Office of Emergency Management to obtain most of our PPE for the staff. And I know that they're working very hard to secure that. I think the trick in our particular case is that we're going to have so much exposure to the public, our staff and the public to public once they're in our buildings, that we need to make sure that we have enough materials to go ahead and open. The phase two, again, is really about distancing within our building and cleaning our computers and cleaning our computers and cleaning our spaces. And as we go on with these different phases, we would just literally be opening up more and more. In both phase one and phase two, we're talking about the main and regional branches, primarily because they're the larger buildings with more collections. When we get to phase two, those are spaces where we can actually socially distance. If you think about our other locations, especially the community libraries, such as Watkins Park, those spaces are so small that it's very hard to socially distance within them. So this has been, again, been a document we've been working on. Terry and Jenna have really led the attack, but really, everybody on the administrative team has been part of making this happen. Susan certainly is up to her neck and her folks and PPE together. Susan and Mark will be our safety team within the building. And you think about how we go forward with not just the equipment, but assisting with the policies we develop for a healthy work environment. So at that point, I'm going to kind of stop and see if there are any questions before I throw out what we've been thinking as far as a potential opening date for curbside service.
Kent, what happens when a customer does not have a mask?
Funny you should ask that. Susan and I were just talking about that this morning. And what we, we'd be in a pretty interesting security situation with that. But one of the things that the metro policy is indicating is that we should have masks to provide customers who arrive and they don't have a mask. Now, the trick will be if they decide they don't care and they want to come in and they don't want to use a mask.
Thinking about your homeless population, though.
Right, right.
But also, I think there's been a lot of people that are not wanting to wear masks. Not the homies, but a lot of people. And so what is going to be the situation with somebody that's not what I want to do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. And one of the things that will be interesting to watch, this policy has been issued by the mayor's office, and it is in place. So we'll be able to see what happens, for instance, at the courthouse. Because the courthouse is a place that now you have to have a mask on in order to go in and do business. There are other metro locations that are somewhat public. I haven't talked to the Parks Department recently, but as they open up community centers or other facilities, they should be in the same situation we are.
And there might have to be some training for staff, too, you know, for people who have anxiety issues and just can't wear that mask. I had an anxiety attack in Costco, you know, of those masks, yeah.
And for instance, I've heard anecdotally of women that are expecting they're wearing them actually in case nausea. Types of things we are going to have to train our security staff to understand.
Are you going to limit the amount of people that come within a family, for example?
Within a family?
Yeah, for example, in the, I'll tell you why. Children's hospital, we allow the parent and the child only. And I don't know, I, it's a hard one because you want the whole children to come and whatever, but I, oh no, it's a question.
Yeah, I don't know that we've really had that on our radar. And that's something we can certainly look at. I mean, candidly, what we've done with these spaces, we've been looking at a lot of the literature that's around the country that's both library and non-library related and trying to apply best practices. So I know that Terry and Jenna are on this call, and I'm sure they're making a note of that, and we can work with that.
Okay.
We do have an age on the, on how young or how old you have to be before you absolutely have to wear a mask.
Yeah, I think the American Academy of Pediatrics says two years of age.
Right, and I believe that's what we're using.
Yeah.
On the whole pickup process, so the process would be, you go online, you order a book, and then you drive it up, pick it up, they put it in your trunk. How do they know, it said that they have to drive up and call somebody inside to come in?
It'll be similar to what you're doing. We will call people and let them know that their materials are ready. And then people will have to hold up their identification when they receive the material.
It said something about calling, you know, just make sure that's easy to do.
Right.
You don't want to get, you know, I mean, if I called the library now, I'd probably get some, I don't know. I probably wouldn't get a real person. And just make sure, it's, it's, just make sure there's not a frustration factor involved in all of that.
Yeah, and I can echo that to Kent, like, excuse me for using a technical term, but using a separate DID number or have a direct number assigned to a group of people that is able to do curbside services, but, you know, that would probably be a little bit helpful.
Also, I worry about our security people, Mark and his people, because, you know, more than anybody else, they're going to be in harm's way a little bit more. They always are. And that goes back to what Joyce said before about the homeless population or other people who don't want to wear a mask, and how are you going to turn those people away? Whether they're going to have to come in contact with those people, and, I don't know. I just think they're in a special situation, and I don't have an answer to that. I just, I worry about them, so.
They're going to have to have a lot of masks. Some people are going to come to you to get a mask. You know, may not be for a book, but maybe get a mask.
Yeah.
Maybe that's a service the library needs to perform.
Yeah.
Providing masks.
Yeah.
And masks.
But I do think a key to making that policy work will be for us to be able to provide people with masks.
Yeah.
And I think if we can get in that situation, we can diffuse a lot of the negative interactions that will happen. Regardless of what we do, like any of our policies, we're going to have people that won't want to conform. And I'm sure that our security people can come up with a process to make that as positive an experience as we can make it.
Just want to make sure, this might be a silly question. What budget line is the mask coming from? Is it coming from the city or is it actually coming out of the budget?
It's coming through the Office of Emergency Management is where we're supposed to be getting our masks. We've also gone after some others through our own supply chains. So we're kind of beating the bushes anywhere we can. We really see this as potentially the issue for us being able to reopen and reopen in phase two. We feel somewhat confident we can have enough protective gear for phase one for our staff. But the real push is going to be when we go to phase two and being able to clean the buildings constantly, being able to make sure everybody has a mask. I mean, when you think about that, just the main library, for instance, what that's going to mean for our maintenance and building staff. Again, you know, and candidly, I don't know what it looks like, and perhaps I'll be surprised, but I think moving from phase one to phase two is going to be our biggest challenge just because of the enormity of what we're working at there in space. And with that, we're not even talking about trying to do the entire system. We're really just talking about the main library in this region, so.
Yeah, I definitely agree with your observation. I'm going through the same thing.
Any other questions? All right, Kent.
I, one of the things that we've been talking about internally is targeting June eight is the date that we begin curbside service. And the reason for this, Delaina, I was hoping we'd go a week earlier, but it seems like by the time we have the PPE in place and we're able to process staffing issues, that I think we're going to realistically be looking at that. We want to bring staff in for training and begin addressing the hold situation, the holds that have been sitting there, people have been waiting on them, and begin processing that the week before, but really going to the public these June eight. And it is somewhat of a complicated situation with the staffing because of new provisions around the COVID with the F M L A. There may be some staff that will not be returning to work immediately because of COVID issues and some other related issues, health issues. So we're in the process right now really determining what our workforce is going to look like as far as people in the building. The first numbers we saw with a preliminary survey were quite large, and so now we're contacting those staff individually to see if they indeed have limitations about returning to work. But I think by the time we get all that together and are able to really mobilize, the June eight seems like a smart date to go for.
Honestly, to give a true observation here, I think June eight is a very aggressive, it's pretty aggressive, but understand it. I'm thinking that you all would try or begin around, I think July four, so I'll be taking notes.
Well, I hope you can stick to the June eight. I think, I just, I think we need to, we need to get back sooner, as soon as we can.
Right.
I'm not quarreling with that date, but I sure hope you stick with it.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you, we're all anxious to be providing books to the public. We're not doing this because we like not getting out there. It's just, I was in a meeting, a metro meeting the other day, and somebody made the comment, and they were right. And as difficult as we felt like the process was closing down some of our systems in March, it is doubly or triply more complicated being able to ramp back up again in this COVID environment.
Yeah. You know, I was, this is a little You know, I, I was, this is a little bit just sort of amusing, I suppose, but, um, I wish we could figure out some way for people to, I don't know, I mean, if you have to go back, you know, if you get into phase two and you have to go back to phase one or something. I just, this goes back to the digital divide that we were talking about earlier. I wish there was some way that we could provide access to the computers, even if the library is not open. You know, cordon off the rest of the books and everything, uh, it's just so many people, and this gets back to the tru- the schoolchildren thing. There's just a lot of people that don't have access to the internet and, uh, I wish there was some way that we could, uh, if, um, I just wish there was some way we could make the computers available, even if the rest of the library is not open. But, you know, you already got your plan going and I don't quarrel with the plan, but, um, if we had to go backwards again, which we might, if it turns out, um, I just wish, I don't know, I don't know whether there's a way to do it or not, but I just think that's a service that is almost essential.
Well, Ken, we can certainly look at it. Thing is in stone in this, I mean, um, with the plan you're looking at now, kind of resembles what we started with a number of weeks ago, as we've learned more. Um, so no, we can certainly take a look at that and see what it is, and it might be a location by location type of thing. Part of it's going to be how much you can control traffic coming into a building, how much you can move computers around to make them maybe more accessible as soon as you get into a building, those sorts of things.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree with that. It don't have to be every, all locations at one time, but location by location maybe.
Yeah, and, and again, there's so many people on our staff doing so many great things in the background and our R I T people have been going, great guns, but just to give you an idea, uh, our R I T folks are going through our buildings right now. Relocating computers and giving social distance to them now as we've started thinking about phase two. I mean, we're already doing that, so. Um, we certainly want to get there.
And, and what you're saying back about the phases, so our phases would not necessarily.
Right.
Uh, coincide with, with Metro's phases. Metro mind phase.
That's correct. There, there are own phases based upon what we feel to, uh, having P P E and, uh, and staff in place. And as we looked at Metro's phasing, we were trying to understand that their social distancing really meant within those. And we, at no time did we think we'd be opening phase one when Metro opened phase one because we didn't see that it's being appropriate. And I guess I would be thinking, I've always kind of thought our phase one with curbside would be kind of, uh, Metro phase two, five, which I think is where we're going to land. Um, I, I understand that Metro is thinking about going to, uh, phase two on the twenty fifth. And the trends that we're seeing indicates that they probably will.
I, I have like a question in terms of like, I think there's very, there's risk population. And it's really, uh, we have some that are not at risk, as much as, as others. Uh, kids are not as risk. We're seeing what it means that it's being seen. We stratified the opening according to risk population. For example, I mean, I would not ask people over a certain amount of age or with chronic conditions to come into the library. And then you could actually open it in a, in a way according to risk population. It's just hard and I know that. But it would be a way of also protecting people.
Yeah, are, are you talking about patrons or staff now, Adrian?
Patrons.
Patrons.
Yeah, and that would be a difficult one to do, but you could say we are not, we are discouraging a certain population, that's fair because the risk factors are still high. This becomes, I was just, we are opening children, then an adult, for example. Because there's a risk difference and we are target populations, we're doing it in a stratified.
Ken, an H R question. What do we do about, uh, people who have a medical condition who are not comfortable? And that, do they get paid? Do they not get paid? Do they what?
It's outlined in the new F M L A guidelines.
Okay.
About how that, I mean, and one of the things that we've talked a lot about and sure Adams has provided great guidance with this is just making sure that we, we apply it in one standard across the board consistently. But the F M L A is pretty specific about what it means if you, uh, apply the COVID, uh, options and, and what the way it looks like. It's not full paying.
Okay.
Adriana, this is Katie. I, I, um, I don't know if we're, if we're allowed, I don't know if allowed is exactly the right word, but it's a public building, just stratify the way you're talking. But I do wonder if, and it, it begs another question to me about signage. And on the outside of our buildings, I, you know, I've just noticed in going, like just the grocery store, some stores, it's very clear on the outside what is required of you to come in this building. And others, not so much. Um, and that is certainly a message that could be in our signage about the where if, you mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're right, we can't force it, but I think we need to educate or kind of say, hey, this is a population at risk, it's your own risk and this is, we suggest kindly that you don't because we'll try our best. But I mean, if this is a kid running around and going to you, we can't control all those things, right? But that, that's why it's in a way that it's kind of like, you can't, it's the same thing. Uh, what are you gonna do with forcing somebody to use a mask to go in to the building? There have been cases of extremely aggressive people getting angry about being forced. And, uh, it's just, it's my right against the community's right, right? And that's the big debate that we all have. But I think it's not wrong to kind of say, hey, we would appreciate if you use a mask, we would appreciate it. And these are the risks, but unfortunately you can't enforce. Or we can, and that is the point where we want to have this thing. Should we enforce? Take a call for a second, so.
I mean, if Metro's policy is that everybody has to have a mask if they're going to a public building, then you just require everybody to have a mask, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, that's the situation we find ourselves in. I think the way we provide masks and the way we train our staff in the most positive way possible is, is going to tell how that plays out. And again, I'm, I'm hopeful that we will learn some things. The courthouse and some of these other metro locations, uh, prior to our buildings opening up.
I, I, yeah, Ken, I think you're exactly right. And I think Adriana's issue is an interesting one because it's not about somebody who doesn't have a mask, if they're given one, it's about somebody who doesn't want to wear one.
Right, right.
I do think there's probably gonna be some, I wouldn't be surprised if there are protests at the courthouse or other places.
Yeah, um, certainly. And in regard to the signage, we are, we do have signage that were, is being pushed us from Metro Department, and we will certainly have plenty of signs up. And I totally agree with you. I think setting expectations and helping people under walking into, to begin with can make a big difference.
Uh, when is, when are the parks gonna reopen?
I do not have that information. I believe they were phased to, but the community centers I'm sure will be down the road because those are large gatherings.
Yeah.
I would, and I was saying phase two of the Metro plan.
Okay.
Do, do I hear a consensus that June eighth is a good target date for us?
Well, I think, I, I think you know, I mean, no, I'd rather have June one, but, but, but I, I, you know, I don't have, I, I, I don't have, I don't have the, any vision into what you've got to do between now and the time you open. So I, I think we've got to leave that to you, but, um, you know, if, if, if Metro is otherwise opening up, um, and, and we are seeing a decline in cases apparently, I mean, all I know is with, uh, in the paper, the, um, I don't know. I'd just love for you to open a week earlier if you could.
Yeah, well, I think the reason again we picked that is that realistically looking at getting our staffing aligned and, and what this will mean for P P E and also getting staff trained once they get in and getting our hold, hold issues moving. I think that's what it looks like realistically for us. And we want to do it right when we do it. We don't want to do it hewder's hewder and make mistakes on the front end.
All right, well, you get a chance to do it earlier, do it.
Okay.
We won't object to that, at least. I mean, you know, you're not gonna be doing, you're not gonna be opening the buildings, you're just gonna be doing the pickup at that time.
Right, but the other key piece of all of this is as you bring staff into the buildings, understanding the processes within the buildings and how you're bringing staff in. There, there's a whole piece where you're going to be taking temperatures of staff when they come to work. Uh, social distancing within the buildings and the workspaces, how you set those up and that sort of thing.
Yeah, but that's basically phase two kind of stuff, right?
Well, no, that's phase one. Once you start having staff working in the building, um, as, as you're providing the curbside. And you're also starting to bring in more of behind the scenes staff where possible. So it's, it's a process.
I have a question. Where does staff eat? Cause one of the things we've had a really, really hard time in the hospital is the, the social distancing when they're. So that has, that has been really, really hard even to, uh, to grant. So that's my only.
We're paying a lot of attention to that and Metro has guidelines that we're applying. And as you look, there's some initial general discussions about that in the document we've provided. We'll have a very specific process. We're looking at staggered schedules, still looking at who can legitimately work from home and who really needs to be on site and, and all of those things.
All right, um, we've got a few minutes left. Um, uh, Ken, do you want to give us any update on the foundation budget?
Uh, it's passed. Uh, the budget that we had arrived at, um, with the, the foundation staff is, is one that, uh, the foundation board passed. I, you know, the discussion is of course, uh, will, will we be looking at a ten percent reduction if there is an issue, uh, with contributions and fundraising this year? Um, there is some of the, um, reserve funding, the rainy day funds that the foundation has that is applied in this budget. It's going to be more of a month to month, month type of looking at this budget very carefully with the foundation. To understand what the process is and, and what the revenues are looking at, looking like. Uh, some really positive news this last week, uh, Dollar General came through with their funding, which is a big chunk of change. I don't know if those of you that are, were on the foundation, uh, word call would like to chime in. I think, I don't know if Lucy's still there, but Katie and Joyce are still here, I think.
I'm, I'm here. I don't have anything to add. Sorry, Joyce, you go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say that, I don't know how much of relief it is, that's not the word I want to use, but the fact that Ken is gonna have an opportunity to go over, you know, with the foundation periodically to see where they are, you know, in terms of fundraising and all of that kind of thing. So, it, to me, what they've been sending out, Katie, I don't know about you, but the fact that they got the, um, they got the, uh, money.
Dollar General, yeah.
Dollar General, which is more than they had before, they were up, they were getting four hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, they got four hundred ninety thousand. They got, uh, forty-five thousand dollars from First Horizon to NASA. And they got some more money from Turner Foundation to do the summer pilot for NASA. I think Stan, and I, and I love the fact that, 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 um, resilience, you know, that peace went out. Cause I think if you just keep on top of that, and this is what we're doing, this is what we're doing, this is why we need the money. And that they share that with donors is gonna help.
All right. Okay, Smith Springs Road. Ken?
We have had, uh, an interesting development in, uh, a branch that we've been looking at down the road. If you look at our facilities master plan, we have an additional, uh, branch added. I believe in twenty twenty-three, at least that's the way it was planned, maybe twenty-two for the, uh, Madison area on Smith Springs Road. The parks just, uh, put up a new community center on Smith Springs Road out in that area. And across the street from that, it's been a tract of land that we've actually been watching probably for five years. And there's been some give and take with the community out there for different developments that that particular, uh, developer would like to, uh, pursue. Uh, one point they were looking at making that property a, uh, a, uh, apartment complex. I believe there is perhaps negative interaction with the community and that has not been pursued. Um, I was on a phone conversation with councilperson Porterfield and the developer, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, the developer is looking at carving out a single family dwellings in, uh, this property that he is looking at and, uh, he's carved out a three acre tract for, and a branch library. That would not be directly across the street from the community center, but nearly across the street. And, um, I was very excited about the discussion because at one time the owner of that property came to us and offered it for a million dollars or, or whatever the, uh, phrase value was. And while we did not get into an actual discussion of, um, what this property might cost, it seemed to me that there, the, the way that the conversation was framed, it looked like that perhaps the developer would donate that land to Metro for a, a library aside in the future, um, around the discussions that he was having on the. So I wanted to make sure that the board was aware that these discussions seem to have started again. Uh, there's nothing specific in place, although they're talking about having zoning hearings, uh, later this summer. And so it may develop more rapidly than I think. Um, it just seems like everything having to do with capital and acquisitions. Property right now is kind of taking a backseat to obviously the other issues we're all looking at. But if we could somehow obtain this property, knowing that it would be a few years before we could actually complete the branch, I think that would be a great thing, especially if it were donated to us.
The answer's good. Some good news.
Yeah, it is good news. Um, again, we, we have yet to see the actual donation offer on the table and, uh, the developer kind of escorted around the question, but it was obvious. Uh, everything was relational there. there.
Yeah. All right, anything else for me, one? Thanks.
I might just, could I just make a quick comment? Um, I know I've got a lot of staff that are attendees on this call. They really have been doing an incredible job. I mean, one of the things that I think you guys have found, and we've all found, that this working from home business doesn't mean you're having to try and find things to do, it's meaningful, and you're having to put bigger boundaries on walking away from the computer. So I can tell you that to a person, our folks have done an incredible job, I'm, I'm really proud of them. Uh, I, I'm just amazed, none of us knew what was going to happen when we got into this adventure, and, uh, I think overwhelmingly, uh, we've responded in a positive way, so, they, they always make us look good, and they do a great job.
Congratulations to all of them. To you too, Ken.
Thank you.
And thank you to the staff listening in, I, I'm so glad you said that, Ken.
I'm continually amazed.
Yeah, great job, everybody. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll stay on the journey.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Thank you, bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Stay, bye-bye.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville dot go.